The if we put on like the kinders of cities got its office or it's got its office up because that's all we can I I been those school systems new come new ones created and count and it says there instead it's as long as probably comes back to charge me saying no way and it's like that was absolutely like in metro the obstacle we started the order just shot the orders handed down there down there touches I don't know I'm sure you know
yeah he'd be
yeah and that's anything else so I see that it it really you're fifty nine well, we got what's gonna happen yeah so bigger state that's it's actually yeah let's that's thank you oh, yeah it's yeah it's it's yeah can I something that's she
so it's it's a whole it's a whole yeah so you're playing your question tomorrow they're 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 three yeah okay I'm sorry right she you saw yeah so it's good she my birthday since you can like test so it turned out really it gets an
hmm yeah I just think
yeah awesome yeah
okay
how are you
we just knew that uh uh
did you hear about it
that's that's all that's all I had all I mean the best of like for uh, never seen the site no, that's about but it is next door yeah probably get get some of it I didn't oh, yeah
I don't that's that's I I don't I don't my shit fresh
uh we looked at him doing some things these people for them and I see okay yeah very uh think about him she yeah she I just didn't know two hundred percent
I I I I
without making sure three options okay exactly six not all perfect first at all eight four but I like or they have they have okay they're they're so they're all they're out they're they're I I I I I I I I I together if they're 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 like that you know but they're like that is closed then and on their shoulders like you know that's one that because what will do this time still but that what has oh, yeah that that I don't it's that actually yeah well, I appreciate you letting me no, no but I think I I I I I thank you I I I I I I said I said still then go later in your box then finally we'll stay with the season pleasure
yes
giving we have we should sound this day I'll come up to yeah go in I I
if you change your mind you end up wanting
uh
comment back there just go out and so
like
yeah I please just I heard you want the world
yeah yeah I just email Brian mentioned my name once once right so I get the time of the no that'll be a more I'm I'm not gonna say
yeah it's just about another yes you guys that would be I just talk about it and then let me guess
okay something who I think that it rather
I mean it's loud
oh okay question of during you on video or something like you see something about all when bring up the person also so I'll yeah I don't know I think I still yeah I guess I would if I get my career each one day I I I'll call you I because much we see
yeah he gets he was like all so he sort of knows me
I've been I feel like he mentioned in terms of okay thank you Bill Bill I'll rest yeah
Good evening, everyone. It is six P M. Time to start the zoning board of appeals meeting for October ninth, twenty twenty five. Calling this meeting to order. Looks like we have a sound quorum tonight. Couple couple people missing. One person, just Ryan, missing tonight. So we need to come together, guys. I know it was challenging for some folks. Minutes, minutes on the September fourth meeting. Anybody have a chance to review or make some edits?
I reviewed and I have no edits, so I moved to approve the September meeting minutes.
If I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of all right, September minutes are approved. Uh, no organizational items tonight, I wouldn't think. And there's no unfinished business, so we can proceed directly to new business after I read my little preamble about the zoning board of appeals and what we can do and what the jurisdiction. So the zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code ordinances to the facts of each case. Zoning Board of Appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought here before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, sign ordinance, and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within thirty days after the decision here is rendered. And with that, we'll proceed to Z B A twenty five dash fifteen. The homeowners at fifty sixty nine Hidden Branches Drive requesting two variances this evening.
Thank you. So they're requesting a stream buffer variance in order to allow retaining walls to encroach into the seventy five foot stream buffer and a variance from chapter twenty seven, section two sixty nine. That's the retaining wall section to allow retaining walls to encroach into the rear setback and to allow a retaining wall height of five feet. So there's three different aspects to the variance request before you all this evening. So you can see the site plan on the right here. The improvements have already been constructed. And so there's a stream on the property that runs slightly to the south of the southern property line and then crosses the property on the southwest corner where it becomes piped. And then it runs underneath Hidden Branches Drive and the stream buffer is highlighted in blue on the site plan to the right. And so the associated seventy five foot stream buffer covers approximately two thirds of the property. And most of the property's improvements are located within the seventy five foot stream buffer, including most of the house, a porch, and a deck. And there is a twenty five foot state buffer and a twenty foot drainage easement along the southern property line. There are no improvements located in this or planned for either of these. In twenty nineteen, a variance was issued to the property for the construction of the house in the seventy five foot stream buffer, and then the house was subsequently constant constructed in twenty twenty. And then in twenty twenty one, another variance was issued to the property for the construction of a fence in the seventy five foot stream buffer. Uh, both these improvements have been constructed. So in June twenty twenty five, the city of Dunwoody was notified about unpermitted work on the subject property and started an investigation. So without permits, the applicant constructed four retaining walls. And so you can see these um, highlighted in uh, red on the site plan. And so all four of the retaining walls encroach into the rear setback. So that's where the setback variance piece comes into play. One, the one that's highlighted in yellow is a maximum of five feet tall. And so that's prompting another aspect of the zoning variance. And then that one is fully in the seventy five foot stream buffer and the uh, there's another one that's partially in the seventy five foot stream buffer. And so a couple of different requests here, and I'm happy to refer back to the site plan at any point if that helps clarify things. And so on the left, you can see there's some photos of the existing walls. So I'll start with the stream buffer um, criteria. And so the applicant states that the retaining walls are partially to act as relief for erosion control. Um, but staff finds that there are other methods of erosion control that would be less obstructive, such as the installation of native vegetation. The retaining walls in the stream buffer and associated reduction in vegetative buffer have already had a negative impact on surrounding natural resources. Their installation damaged the critical root zone of several trees to an extent where a couple of trees need to be removed. Um, additionally, the construction of the retaining walls led to an observation of increased sediment within the stream and an increase in surface runoff. While stabilization measures have been put in place by the applicant, staff does not consider the request to be as protective of natural resources and the environment as would a plan which met the strict application of the stream buffer requirements. The applicant also states that the retaining walls were installed to create a more level backyard. While understandable from a recreational usage perspective, staff does not find an extreme hardship with this request for the retaining walls located within the seventy five foot stream buffer. Overall, staff finds that the portion of the project located within the seventy five foot stream buffer goes beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief and approval of the variance could potentially grant the applicant special privileges. This view is also supported by the twenty nineteen app variance application for the subject property. Um, the stream buffer variance request at that time did not include retaining walls within the stream buffer, nor were they recommended by the civil engineer for the project at the time. Um, therefore, staff recommends that all retaining walls within the seventy five foot stream buffer be removed. So all four of the retaining walls also encroach into the rear setback and one is a maximum of five feet tall, prompting a zoning variance. So the property slips down from the rear property line to the front property line by fourteen feet, prompting the installation of the retaining walls to create a flat backyard. Most of the retaining walls are maximum of four feet tall, while the only retaining wall taller than four feet is entirely located within the seventy five foot stream buffer. While the request for a maximum five foot tall retaining wall is considered a relatively small project, staff's recommendation is to remove all retaining walls within the seventy five foot stream buffer. Therefore, we recommend that the height variance also be denied as the only wall needing the height exception is located fully within the stream buffer. Um, the encroachment of the subsequent retaining walls into the rear setback is relatively minor, appearing to be the minimum necessary to afford relief. Additionally, much of the buildable areas within the seventy five foot stream buffer, limiting the area available for improvements. And so staff finds that the strict application of the setback requirements could cause practical difficulty by not allowing for incremental changes to the property. Um, therefore, staff recommends approval of the setback variance. We received two letters in support and both of those were included in the packet. So staff is recommending denial of the request to allow retaining walls to encroach into the seventy five foot stream buffer and denial of the request to allow a retaining wall height of five feet. Staff is recommending approval of the request to allow retaining walls to encroach into the rear setback with the condition shown on screen here, which is essentially conditioning them to the submitted site plan with the exception that all portions of retaining walls within the seventy five foot stream buffer are not approved and must be removed within ninety days of the granting of this variance. And then in order to do so, they'll need to get a demolition work, demolition permit, as demolition permits would be required to do work within the stream buffer. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Board, any initial questions for staff? Erica's got okay go ahead. You can wait if you want.
Oh, I'm wait
okay all right, we'll wait.
They may
thank you. Will the applicant or representative care to uh, come to the docket and address the board and and your state, your case? Just say your name and address for the record at the microphone.
Maya Pepperback. Hi. Um okay. So I also, we have an additional
and Maya, I'm sorry, you are representing
I'm representing the homeowners and we're the one that constructed the work, the owner of the company.
Thank you.
Um okay better all right. Um, we also have an additional letter and some neighbors in support, so I was told that I could present that now if you wanted to accept it or not. Um
Um, that's fine. You can give them to staff. That's fine.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, I'll go over the information that I have and then my husband will um, kind of go on the more technical side of things, if that's okay? Okay. Um
you have ten minutes total, so you're good.
Okay, perfect. And so essentially I wanted to as a company, take full responsibility for not pulling the permit on the height wall and knowing the um, accessibility to this area. And we have never, as a company, been out of code or had any situation like this. And I just wanted to um, take full responsibility in front of all of you tonight. Um and I wrote this down so I could read it off. Um we're I'm formally requesting a variance for my client's pop property. Uh, the request is made under section sixteen dash seven eight, some Dunwoody's landscape develop sorry, land development ordinance and related provisions of the zoning ordinance, the seventy five foot stream buffer and rear setback requirements. The lot persists unique topical challenges, including a steep driveway and limited level outdoor space for my clients' children. The project intent was to construct a outdoor space for my clients' children, constructing a retaining wall and inside installing sod to create a safe and stable yard. During construction, we mismanaged the scope of work and take full responsibility for the following. Retaining walls encroaching into the seventy five foot stream buffer. Um, not into the state mandated twenty five, retaining walls encroaching into the rear setback, retaining walls exceeding four feet in height without the necessary variance. This is unintentional but significant mistake. Um essentially the so the criteria for the variance would be first hardships due to the property conditions. The property slope and layout makes it extremely challenging to create a functional outdoor space without the use of grading and retaining walls. Without the variance, the unstable portion of the yard is severely limited, impacting the reasonable enjoyment of the property. Two, in environmental protection and mitigation, the work includes drainage pipes that collect clear water, filter through gravel and discharge it slowly as a designed exit point, reducing erosion and sediment into the stream. Changing the backyard grade prevents erosion from both the current and future owners, while also protecting the stream buffer from dirt and debris. Compatibility with neighborhood character, the retaining walls and landscape enhance the curb appeal and property value of both my client's home and the Hidden Branches neighborhood. The structures have been decided to code and are code certified by a licensed structural engineer. Everything that's in there has been approved by a structural and civil engineer. Um, compliance with the spirit of the ordinance, while part of the city seventy five foot stream buffer has been impacted. Remaining, uh, the twenty five foot state buffer remains untouched and improvements are designed to enhance long term stream protection. Uh, the project supports the purpose of the buffer's ordinance while addressing the practical needs of the um, property. And attached to all of this information are site plans showing buffer and setback lines, photos of the existing improvements. Full as-built land survey, letter of support from neighbors, engineering certification of the retaining walls that are up, including the five foot one. We respectfully request that the zoning board of appeals in city grant this necessary variance to allow the existing retaining walls and grading improvements within the city of Dunwoody seventy five foot stream buffer outside of the state. Sorry, twenty five foot state buffer and rear setbacks. Um, and the wall height being over four feet tall. These improvements adjust safety, erosion control, and usability and usability while maintaining the environmental integrity and neighborhood character that the order ordinance is seeking to protect. Um additionally, we have been here at the city multiple times working on this process. And I would just like to illustrate a timeline. Um on May twentieth of our persistence and ability to show up consistently and doing anything that was asked of us immediately, promptly. Um with multiple things coming up. So May twenty fifth, stop work order, May thirtieth, request to alleviate. There was a ton of rain. It was during the torrential raining in the spring of last year, and we had to alleviate water that um was shown in the description of the report prior that said there was sediment, but that was from relieving a ton of water that had been sitting. So I wanted to clarify that. Um June first, we were told that we need a survey to show the work area. Um, we got that done on June tenth. The site plan needs a survey of the entire area. June sixth, um Allegra emailed me stating that the survey was good to go. July first, um I got an email, thanks for sending all this over on the variance application. Please include the following. July eighth, just seven days later, I got message that we took a look at the property. Um, this is direct. When we took a look at the property today, it appears to be more complicated than we originally thought. Are you available to meet in person and talk later this week? So we talked later this week. Uh, the variance was put on hold until a civil engineer and an arborist report could be presented. And then July fifteenth, met with the city to get a more clarification on all the needs as we were desperate to get on this schedule today. July twenty fifth, we're told that we need to find a gravel pit in order to move forward. We found the gravel pit four days later and the variance application was submitted on August twelfth. Um I got an email checking back in to make sure that I get all of this information on July twelfth so that we could be meeting here today on October ninth. I stated that I had already sent the information over and it was referred to me that they'd never received our documents and had been doing some system permitting reprocessing, um, causing major delays with communication. August fourteenth, he accepted the variance package. Everything looks great and they were happy with the documentation. Last week, I got a call from the city casually emailing me, telling me the agenda. Um saying that they were gonna pass one part of the variance or speak to it, saying that they approved and then add the denial. So that was never communicated to me before last Thursday. And then I immediately called up to Allegra to speak with her and say, please, how do we get to this space? And I was just told that I need to bring all the evidence that I can today um, without much communication. So I am going to let Adam speak to the technicality of this project and my client to speak on the personal side of this project.[1362.24] My client to speak on the personal side of this project and we appreciate your time and considerance. Um, and we remain ready to provide any additional information, attend hearings and work with staff to address these concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm gonna allow five more minutes. Cause I know we have some people to speak as well, so. We'll give them five more minutes, cause we're at pretty much that time or almost a time. Um, so yes, you wanna speak about the technical things and I know you got a couple people wanna speak in favor as well.
Yeah, I won't take too long. Um, my name's Adam Zimmerman. With A to Z Drain Solutions. Uh, first and foremost, we built these walls. To reduce the amount of slope that is going towards these stream buffers um. And we built the walls with the idea that we were going to capture as much water. We had surface drains that were not, you know, allowed to be. Installed yet due to the code enforcement being stop work order um. But the most important thing is. You know, the area on the bottom side of their house where it's the daylight basement exit where all the water is going down to like we're. First and foremost, a waterproofing company where we are taking the customers home and the longevity of the home. Into consideration, that's the most susceptible area where water can enter the home, so trying to capture. The water on the top side using the grass, reducing the slope um. Was our first major concern um. And every wall that we've ever built, you know, we have structural engineers that we work with that refer us on jobs. We did not obviously follow through with the process at this house, but we had it stamped and signed off. From a structural engineer um. And now being asked to remove this wall after all the disturbance that its cause would only negatively impact, you know, the longevity of this home with. The amount of dirt that would have to be removed. Uh, we've already removed seventy yards of dirt and then now having to disturb the ground that has been. Constantly sitting, getting hard, getting ready for. You know, all the water to run off in that area would just be detrimental moving forward um. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else wanna speak in favor of the application? Bill? Yeah, yeah, homeowner, yeah, go ahead, sorry, absolutely.
Good evening, um, my name is Alicia Fanual and that's my husband, Lee Gerson. We live at fifty sixty nine Hidden Branches Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for the work you do for, on behalf of our community. As you know, we're here to request a variance related to our retaining wall which encroaches on the stream buffer zone and exceeds the permitted height. When we moved from New Jersey to Dunwoody a little over a year ago for my husband's job at Northside Hospital. And for us to be closer to his family, our priority was simple and clear, to create the best environment and home for our children. This included a safe and usable backyard play space for our young and very active two boys ages six and nine. The property's extreme slope in the back of the home made that impossible without adding a retaining wall to make the yard level and harmless for them. We wanna emphasize that we had no knowledge that our property sat within a stream buffer zone and that permits were not pulled. At no point during the purchase of our home was a stream buffer zone and potential geographical limitation disclosed. In New Jersey and Massachusetts where we have experience, homeowners and realtors are required by law to disclose this kind of information to buyers. Unfortunately, what we eventually learned is that the real estate laws in Georgia are very different from those in New Jersey and Massachusetts. Had we known about the buffer zone, we would have handled things entirely differently. In fact, we probably would not have purchased the property at all if we had understood that a safe level yard for our children. Wasn't possible without going through this kind of protracted, expensive and very frustrating process. We are two full-time, hardworking, exhausted parents who are excited to purchase a move-in-ready new home. With no major construction or work required. Oh, how wrong we were. We recognize the importance of protecting natural buffers and water quality and we deeply regret that this situation has occurred. In fact, environmentalism is important to us. We fiercely recycle, we try to reduce waste and we enjoy spending time outside in nature. Our intention was never to circumvent the rules, only to create a functional, family-friendly backyard. As I am sure every other parent in our community looks to do for their children. We also wanna highlight that several of our neighbors have submitted letters of consent in support of our variance request. Two of our immediate neighbors are here in support of us. In fact, I reached out to some of them as a courtesy prior to beginning this backyard project back in February of twenty twenty five. Their support reflects that our project has not negatively affected those around us. More would probably be here today if it weren't for us. The Branches Moms Night Out, which happens to be tonight, so some people were busy. Um, we've worked closely with city staff since learning of the issue. Our contractors, my husband and I have complied with every inquiry and exploration that has been asked of us, including tearing up pieces of our own front yard. For the past nearly six months, we have been living in a total state of limbo. We have dangerous cement blocks laying all throughout our backyard, talk about an unsafe situation for our children. As well as piles of mud and dirt and several areas of overgrown grass. Our intent to create a functional outdoor space for our boys has resulted in over a year of them barely touching the backyard. I brought some pictures to show you. All we want at this point is a speedy end to the situation so that we and our contractors. Can move on and we can begin our life in the branches. We respectfully ask that you consider our good faith, the family and safety reasons behind our actions and the support from our neighbors when evaluating our request. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And the speaker card, we have one, right? Okay. Like this is Bill's, right? Bill, would you come to the podium, please? And thank you.
I'm Bill Grossman, I live at five zero six one Hidden Branches Drive. I'm the immediately adjoining neighbor. The stream, which is a tributary to Mar- March Creek that starts behind Publix. Goes through the br-. The branches down and joins March Creek about where the Branches Clubhouse is down. At in the floodplain at the bottom of the hill. Uh, that's about three blocks farther down. It goes underneath. The street in Lee's yard, in his front yard, it goes into a culvert and goes under the street. And comes out across the street between the two neighbors over there. What they've done to get a a level playing area. Is been successful. It hasn't had a detrimental effect on any of the adjoining neighbors that I'm aware of. And the stream goes through along my property and along our property lines before it goes underground. Um, I haven't seen any sediment issues. And I keep a pretty good watch on it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
I do wanna recommend number two on the options.
I do wanna recommend number two as the option that is approving all the appeals. These folks were new to town, had a problem. Uh, the only mistake they made was maybe in the contractor they chose. Uh, and a lot of people have been in that situation before. Uh, I do encourage you to approve all of these. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that's the time's expired for those speaking in favor. Anyone speaking in opposition of this application? Alright, no, no opposition. So with that, I will uh open up the board comment. Close it to public comment. I need a rather extensive list there.
Some of it's been addressed. Um, Allegra, I have some questions for staff. And these are in no particular order, so forgive my being all over the map here. Uh, the arborists that came out and evaluated the trees, were they brought out at? City's request after the awareness of this project?
Yeah, so when we did a site visit, um, we um brought some, we brought one of our um site inspectors who's familiar with. Um, matters like that and he, based on what he was seeing, he recommended that the arborists that we, that. The contractors have an arborist take a look and that's what they did.
Okay, um. I think the homeowner already addressed this question. That they had no awareness of prior variance requests that had been submitted both for the construction of the house. And for the fence in the stream buffer, cause they did not live here at that time. They, they were not, they were not the ones that submitted those requests because they weren't living here at the time.
That's correct.
Okay, um. The. Somebody already spoke to this point, I think it was the contractor. The impact of removing the retaining walls that are in the stream buffer. Has anyone from this city evaluated? That process, is there, can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, um, we haven't done a formal evaluation of that process. What we would ask them to do would be to. Restore the conditions that were there prior um to stabilize the site. Um, beyond that, I can't really speak to more specifics.
Okay. Um. Okay, the sediment issue, uh, your, your write-up addressed that. Um, sediment and surface runoff has been found in the stream resulting from construction of the retaining walls and then. There was a comment that this sediment actually came from removing standing water that had been. I, I think I understood that it was standing water that had pooled in an area is, but what I'm curious about is. Um, how does that? And this might be a little ignorant, how does that sediment and surface runoff impact this stream? Does it just? Pollute it, we don't know, like what?
Yeah, I mean, generally, I can't speak to exactly what happened here because we didn't do any water analysis or anything like that um. But you know, generally speaking, yeah, sort of pollutes the stream, um, prevents it from flowing smoothly. Um, that, that sort of thing can block it up.
Okay, um, was there one more? I think that covers it. Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, so I, I got a couple. Um. For the city, uh, so be a little more specific for me, cause um. You said that root zones and erosions is what's happening.
Mm-hmm, critical root zone?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what that means is that there's a portion of the, you know, a tree has roots, those roots grow out pretty far, there's a. Circular area around the tree where those roots within that are considered critical, meaning if they're disturbed, the tree will eventually die. And so when a tree's critical root zone is disturbed, that's when we get concerned and start talking about, you know, the potential of having to remove a tree. Since it won't be able to survive without those roots.
Okay, and I've, I mean, I've, I've, I've read this whole thing. Um. There's other times when the city's like, well, you know, I guess they constructed it. Uh, maybe we'll let it go, but on this one, you're saying denial. Uh, aside from what you told me, why, what's the strong feeling about it?
So we enforce our stream buffer regulations very strictly as, as you all see before you pretty frequently. Um, and so we take the environmental disturbance aspect um very, very seriously as part of it.
Okay, and um, so there were two. Oh, variances taken out of this home, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one, and it's probably in my papers, but I don't remember, a long day. Um, when did they move in?
Uh, the current homeowners?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure, I would need to get the homeowners up here.
That's okay, I have questions from the, for them anyway, so I don't know about it. Um. Did the um. Did the, the contractor, did they ever contact you before this or?
No, this was a, this was a complaint that came to us.
Okay, alright. And then um, I'll ask the next questions to the homeowners or the contractors, whoever wants to, actually, actually the contractor. I mean, I, I, I do wanna um. Say that I respect you guys for saying, listen, we messed up, so. Cause usually. I, I have no tolerance for those usually.
Yes, sir.
But because you said, okay, you know what? Um, so I'm willing to listen now. Um, so. They hired you guys, right?
Yes, sir.
You guys are the contractors.
Yes, sir.
What happened?
So, uh, under my knowledge, I wa- was on the assumption that twenty-five feet. For a stream buffer, which. You know, my history of with stream buffers, there's an active stream. Um, it just looked like a drainage ditch in between two yards. Uh, there's no active stream in there, so I was not aware that there was like a state stream buffer variance or. Set back that was seventy-five feet, I thought it was twenty-five, we were, I think the closest part was forty-seven feet. So I just thought, and when we first initially constructed the wall on the lower side. You know, we wanted a one to two percent slope for runoff. It's ideal for a yard that's gonna stretch about. You know, a hundred, two hundred feet, you want one to two percent. And so we went up. An extra foot based on the slope. Um, so it wasn't our initial plan to build a wall. Five feet tall, we normally build walls at four feet and under unless we get them signed off and it was our mistake.
Yeah, but see, the problem I'm having with this house is this, I mean, one of the problems is a lot. Two thirds of the house. Is in a restricted portion, if you wanna call it, yeah. I mean, as a builder, I just, did you guys look at a? Did you look at a survey? Did you guys look at anything like this?
No, sir.
And you were telling us a bit the reasons why. Um, we should let you keep it because it's gonna be, aside from the fact that if you take it out, there's no more wall, right? What else is gonna happen?
I mean, so the, the amount of dirt that we removed off of the property. Um, so now it's had time to kind of settle behind the wall. And now we're going to have to remove a wall along with all this dirt. Um. And it's just gonna be problematic not only for the stream buffer, but for the homeowners and. When you get water that washes down in an area like it was, um, and it's kind of dictating based on the pace. Uh, and the slope of the ground, um. You know, now with all this. Loose soil that will, that they would experience having, it would be virtually impossible for. It to go back the way that it was.
And to walk me through the barriers, I'm, I'm guessing, how long you, you guys been in business?
Five years.
Okay, is this the first retaining wall you put in?
No, sir.
Have you pulled permit before for retaining walls?
No.
Okay, well. Um. Alright, I'll ask the question anyway. So tell me why I should. Consider this variance and, and I'll walk through it to what I'm looking at. A variance, it means that you need to be treated differently than other one, than everyone else, you gotta be. You, you, you're no longer without that boundary of the law, so tell me why we should give that to you. And hence variance, varied, why should you be varied from the rest of the population?
Um. That's a great question, but.
I mean, that's, that's, that's our basis.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's number one for us, you know, and then we could listen, so you don't take your time, but. But, but, but tell me. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm just asking the questions.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
Um, in the Hidden Branches neighborhood, the majority of the homes not only encroach but have this same exact issue. Their home was, without getting specific as to what neighbors, they are one of. Over fifty percent of this neighborhood and I've canvassed it run into this issue. Um. Again, they would not have any workable yard space. Um, another reason to permit it is that it's. Been signed off by an engineer and that it's structurally sound and not going to cause any issues. Um. There's. There's a lot of responsibility that we take, but there's also a lot of reasons environmentally to not remove this wall or. Demolition permit or anything like that because of the. Destruction that it would cause to their yard, in inability to have any type of space for it.
Yeah. Um, did you guys, did you guys, did they sign a contract with you guys?
Yeah.
Did you, did they, did the contract imply that you were gonna pull permits?
No.
Okay, because I mean, I, on a human level, I feel bad for the people because if you hire somebody. That's part of what you expect. I mean, I guess I would be frustrated also. I mean, I just. And I think I'll be more than frustrated, but I, we gotta, and I'm not telling you what I'm gonna do and I'm, I'm, the fact that I'm asking you questions, period, is. Is, I'm telling you, it's good, cause usually I'll be like, see you later, but.
Thank you.
I'm trying to figure out. What message am I sending over here by saying, you know, this is a home, whether you wanna think about it's not yours or not. With two, two permits that have been pulled already, right? Which sits, two third of it sits on a. In a zone where you gotta pull permits. I don't see what you don't do in this house that you don't pull permits. And then now you got not one, not two, but you got three walls, you know? Y- you guys understand? So, um, and, and that's why I'm asking the questions to try to figure out a way that I could just say, okay, you know, maybe. Maybe there's, there's a justification for it.
Sorry, I'm.
Go ahead.
Just from a personal level.
Not, go to Mike.
Talking, and talking to other people who live in the branches. It is not uncommon for people to knowingly do work and not pull permits. So I actually feel like my situation is unique and that. We. Are becau- yeah, we are, we're being made an example of. Um, and I'm not, I. It, it feel, like this is the personal, I'm not talking about legally, you know, I, two wrongs don't make a right, the, the laws are laws. But we are not the exception, this was not an exception to have work that. Didn't have permits pulled or to not have the variance in my experience in what I've.
Just, just so the record, I'm not blaming you personally, you know, the difference between. The guy that gets pulled over for drunk driving and the one that's driving drunk is one gets caught and the other doesn't. So, so tha- that's the difference, you know, and I tell people this all the time, but I'm not, I'm not trying to make it. I'm, I'm really trying to figure out a way to help you guys, you know, but that's, that's why I'm asking the questions and I wanna get some more clarity. Uh, on it, so don't, don't think that.
Yeah.
You're good with me, it's just, hey, maybe I'll stop. Let's about yes go.
Erica?
Can someone put seventy yards of dirt in context for me? Draw me a picture, given this room, what does seventy yards of dirt look like?
Yeah, it's like ten full tandem load dump trucks of, from the ceiling. And probably filling up this entire front room.
That's seventy yards, so. So if this had to be undone, then the intention would not be to backfill the yard. Tamp it down like it would be to remove it, shave it down and then.
Uh.
Like, like, I, I have you talked through a reparation process? Like if this doesn't go in the homeowner's favor, have you talked through a reparation process?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Um, and I do wanna say to the homeowners as a California transplant, I get y'all. Because we spent three hours for every home we had in California at closing. Disclosure after disclosure after disclosure, and when we moved here twenty years ago. It was great to close a house in fifteen minutes, but I had no idea what I was signing on, so, um, I, I get you. Um. And so, uh, so city, like we've already asked you guys, you, you have not done an assessment of the. Of, of reversal, like what that might mean, because we already know what's happened with the input. But we don't have any sort of eyes on the ground in terms of reversal.
No, um, I mean, we're, you know, we have the project that's here before us, um, should the board. Choose to recommend that those portions of the walls be removed, we would work with the applicant. To, you know, get the demolition permit issued and then to figure out what next steps would be, you know, with sort of engineers.
Silk fences, all of it, okay.
Stabilization measures, um, and restoring conditions as much as possible. Um, and we under, you know, if, if the homeowner has erosion issues that they're trying to fix, we can talk through what options would look like for that.
Okay, and, and if I could bring the homeowner back up really quickly, so one of the things that, if y'all wanna come back up. Um, one of the things that I noticed in the picture is you had a part of the wall, it looks like it's by the deck, it's the muddy. Part of the photos in the application, so one of the things that we talk about and, and that, uh, and I don't know if your contractor spoke to you at all. About this, but one of the things that we talk about when people make oopsies is how do we make the oopsie right? Um, and so grass is one way to prevent erosion, but you've got a lot of mud that is down by. Below that deck area close to the house, I think. What is your plan for, or what have you talked about how you would? Uh, plant in order to prevent further erosion in that area to prevent mud going into the, um. Wha- what is your plan for landscape in that area?
Our original plan was to create a basketball area for our children. Um. Don't, don't think that's gonna be happening moving forward. Um, so we'll do whatever we need to do, grass, you tell us what to put there, we'll put it there.
Okay, yeah, I don't think impervious space is probably going to be able to go in that area. Um, so, um. Just, are you open to heavy vegetation that would have deep roots to prevent like the erosion? Just, are you open to heavy vegetation that would have deep roots to prevent like the erosion and and mud running into the area?
Just wanna move on.
Okay, yeah, all right, my heart's with y'all, I truly like, I I am right there with you, so as a transplant.
I actually have a question for the city. If. If the walls stay. And. We required something else to. Keep the stream. I guess in better shape than what's happening now. Has the city thought about any other possible remediation that. They could do in that area that they wouldn't have to rip out everything that's been done?
So our sort of number one gold standard that we suggest to people. Um, when they're wanting to mitigate screen buffer impacts is a native planting plan, is some sort of native landscaping in the area. To prevent fur- further erosion, um, into the stream and that's, yeah, that's our, that's our standard.
Okay, so they're not, they're, they don't need any more type of drainage or anything like that that would help the stream. It would just be vegetation.
So I I can't exactly speak to that, I would need to talk to our engineer to see, you know, if, you know, the conditions on the site were changing pretty. Um, quickly for a time and it's all stabilized now, but we would need to take another look at it, um, but I would say my sort of immediate reaction would be. Landscaping plan and then I'm not sure about anything else.
Okay, would now would the city be able to come up with a landscaping plan?
No, so typically what happens is we require the applicants to come up with a landscaping plan and then we run it past our arborist. To and and our engineer, just to make sure that it that it sort of looks correct, but the onus is on them to come up with the. With the particular native plants they would like.
Okay, so they could, so it could be that they came back with, this is an option. Do, does the city say yes to this? Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the city, um, three of them. So during the exchange, uh. It seems to me, and I might be wrong, that the builder seemed to think. That everything was going fine and that they were going to get. The approval and then right last week or two, three days ago, boom, they're like, they figured out. Like, I I could be wrong, that. It's gonna be denounced. Is that, was that something that the city found out or what happened in your mind in your in the process?
So it's our standard process that people get the recommendation a week before. The hearing, which is when you all get the get the packet as well, so that is our standard process there. Um, you know, when we have pre-application meetings, we are upfront with people about our concerns, but we really can't say at that point. Until we've evaluated the application effectively, exactly what we're going to recommend on it. Um, certainly, we expressed concerns about the retaining walls that are in the stream buffer, you know, it. The the retaining walls are there, they're currently existing, and so, you know, this could have been the sort of project where we might have. Recommended that someone not do it had they come to us before they built it, but since they already built it, we just have to evaluate it, um, for what it is.
Okay, so, uh, my second question is. So what hap- so as we stand here now, we don't really know. What happens if the walls get taken out, you know, we do, we don't know the full effect of what's gonna happen, right?
For them to stabilize the site, certainly. I mean, the whole point of getting the demolition permit is so that we can review that and make sure that. The process of removing the retaining walls within the stream buffer will not. Um, cause damage to the stream in the surrounding area, but I can't provide specifics on exactly what we would wanna see as part of that. We haven't gotten that far in the process, that's what we work out in the permitting phase.
Yeah, part of my thinking is. They're wrong. That's not, but what am I making it worse by taking it out and then leaving out, you know, you understand what I mean? So that that's the part that I don't really know, I I'm not saying they're right. But if they do take it out, uh, is it gonna cause more disturbance or trouble than if they keep it?
Yeah, I mean, our, you know, our focus is very narrow, which is we're, you know, we're charged here with just evaluating the specific variance, um, that is before us. And so that's what our, that's what our recommendation is based off of. Um, any, any work that people do within stream buffers that we oversee, we're overseeing very heavily and ensuring. You know, that the appropriate stabilization measures are being taken.
And my last question, so tell me about the complaint a bit, is it someone came in and says, hey. These people over here, they're building, or is it, listen, because of this, what's going on here? X, Y, or Z is happening to my property.
So I don't unfortunately have any further details on that, we've, we transitioned to a new permitting software. About a month and a half ago, and as part of that, we don't currently have access to our old records for code enforcement cases. Um, so I don't know exactly where the complaint came from, um, I don't know if it was a complaint or if it was something that our, um, site inspector saw. When he was out there, that site inspector is no longer with the city, so unfortunately, at this stage, I just can't provide any more information. About that, we don't have access to our data yet, we'll have it at some point, but I don't know when.
Yeah, and so far, what you've seen is the the roots that have come in and that's what you've so seen so far. What are, what are the effects of the wall that you've seen so far?
So when we did a site visit, we observed that there was sediment and runoff in the creek. Um, and we observed that the critical root zone of the trees had been disturbed. Um, that there was, yeah, significant sort of water issues on site as the applicant has spoken to as well.
Speak to both of those things and I can tell you the name of the individual, but they originally called into code enforcement. Because they thought there was an addition to their home being made, as in a pallet, as I'm sorry, a, uh, concrete slab. And so they were calling and saying you need to pull permits if you would like to make additional. Square footage to their home in addition on the, if you're facing the house, the right part of the home. Would they in, they inquired and they came out to the site and they realized that that wasn't happening.
We, we did request, um, cuz it's public information, the the name of who it was and it is not someone who is located in Dunwoody. Um, well, the address that's on file is is not a Dunwoody resident. So I don't know if they were using a different name or or what, but.
Can, can I ask one more question? While you're there, I wanted to know if you had known. That you had to get a permit or a variance. And I don't know if you've worked in Dunwoody or not, but now you know. And if you had gone through the process prior to doing this work or prior to designing. At the point where you had designed it and needed to get the approval and learned that you could not construct a retaining wall in a stream buffer. Or you had come before us and the variance wasn't approved. What would you have done in this area instead of retaining walls to help with the? The water mitigation? What other options would you have had if a retaining wall was not an option?
So Adam might be able to speak better to this cuz he's out in the field, but definitely sod would be one of those things.
Yeah, so additions of sod, mulch, bushes, things that are. Gonna absorb a lot of water, which we also weren't. Made aware of the, there's a gravel pit that's over on that side of the house that, um. You know, probably limit some of the the stuff that we would do when it comes to planning stuff. And also, if I could just address the sediment issue, um. So the sediment that was seen inside of the stream buffer was when we had the code enforcement, the stop work order, which we had to leave. The property, we had torrential downpours, we had the seventy yards of dirt sitting there covered. Um, we asked for the approval to have it removed, it was granted, we removed it, but then it was just open dirt. That was left over sitting, you know, at surface level, we had torrential downpours on that lower side, which caused sediment to wash in. It's not from the wall, like it's firstly impossible for a wall that is holding dirt back with a permanent. Vegetation on top of the grass to allow dirt to wash into. Um, the stream buffer, like it's just. It's not possible. So it was from the lower side, like the wall didn't do anything to allow dirt to wash into the stream buffer, it was from. The stop work order, so we were not allowed on property. And then we had all that dirt removed and that was the only thing we were allowed to do and it had to be removed. Without machines, cuz it was near the stream buffer, so we complied with them the entire time and then. We had to go back and do a check dam, which we did up to code, um, and mulch stabilization in those areas. Once we were allowed to go back and actually perform the work, but it wasn't. The sediment that they saw in the stream buffer was from the lower side, I have pictures and documentation of when that happened, like the. Based on the grade that was left over that we didn't get to address. They almost had water coming in their house, so we had to go back over and alleviate the water, which caused sediment and stuff to run into the stream buffer.
Thank you.
I have what, what you had up here, how would you address the concerns that the city has? Um, she says, the city says there's, they observe roots, um, and they. Observe erosion, let's say. The wall stays.
Yes, sir.
How do you address these?
So the the erosion part on the bottom is is very simple because it, we weren't allowed to go back and do. A regrading process, add vegetation, add correct stuff, it was, you know, we had a stop worker, so we just. Have stopped and complied, but if given the opportunity to go back and address those areas, it can one hundred percent be mitigated. From anything washing into the stream buffer, the tree, like I physically met with the arborist, um. Out there and and she said it's recommended due to like some of the folias that she saw on the tree, but. It wasn't like a guarantee that that tree had to come down, but if that, that's not really. Having much to do with the actual stream buffer, I think the removal of the tree, um, would be the simple answer. If necessary, if necessary, yeah. Right, you have a question.
And replanting. I was gonna say, I I just, the fact that these people have put. All this money into this wall, I'm I'm definitely not voting, I'm not gonna vote to remove the wall, I think the wall should stay and I think. The landscaper who made or, you you know, the contractor who made the mistake should remedy that situation and landscape or. Find some kind of mitigation, the fact that. I mean, I I have a home where contractors did stuff and I I I didn't realize, I I mean, it's it's obviously. As the homeowner, it's it's, but to make these people take this wall down and the fact that we've been talking about this for an hour, I think is. I I think it's absurd, I I really do and I might, you know, I I rarely disagree with the city. I I probably have never, this is probably the first time where I I'm, I don't agree with the city's assessment here and I, to have these people. Have these, this beautiful wall taken down and disturb their property and all of this expense, I I just think that is. That's such a waste. And I I think you made a mistake, I I don't think you guys are bad people, I think you seem like nice people and mistake was made. And these people were not apprised of this issue when they bought the home, um. The fact that we spent an hour kind of debating that, I think it's ridiculous, I think I'm gonna, so that's just where I stand, I I completely disagree with the assessment of the city on this.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Ryan. I recall us, uh, granting the variant, the original variants actually vaguely for this property, it was, it was, it was very generous, right? So if the homeowners honestly had been the same, uh, I might have a little different lens on this, uh, cuz we gave some pretty. Pretty liberal interpretations of the stream buffer to construct a home. Um, but that and the fact that, um, I don't see any removal. I I I don't see in any way how this property could be in a better shape with removal of the wall at this point, right?
Yeah, I mean, for me, I I. The homeowner is forget it. I mean, I hate to throw these people, the the builders, I just, I have no sympathy for that at all. Because I'm just thinking myself, you know, I go, I'm coming from New Jersey, I come down, I hire somebody to do this, I don't, I don't care about the wall. I mean, I don't care about permits, I don't worry about permits, I'm paying you, that's it, you know, I mean, that's me, you know, and and I am. The the homeowners to me, they're not even part of this whole thing, they, the fact that they gotta be deal with it, but I do have a problem with. We just granting. I'm not saying I'm not, but I'm I'm I I gotta advocate it, come on, people, you know, you got, you you got a home here, you got. And then I, we bent, I remember this. We bent over backwards a little bit to grant things this, and even there was probably a warning to this, to this person. And then now, well, three, four years, they got back in the same hole, so now you guys understand where I'm coming from. You know, it's not that I, this is not, I and we don't remember a lot of this stuff, you know, so to say that, oh, man, big deal. Uh, what happens to the next person that comes in front of me and says, hey, remember those people? They didn't build one wall, they built four walls, you know, so, uh, I I, but but I do have a concern though, I gotta tell you, forget walls. The the city and and that question has not been answered to me very well. The city observes something. I mean, and and you know what, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I'm not trying to be, my wife does not let me do too many handy work. You know, but I do understand that there's, there's something that of a concern and I, I, nobody's telling me. If it's, how it's gonna be fixed, how it's not gonna fix it, is it gonna be a silver fence, nobody knows actually, because apparently, right after this happens. There wasn't enough time between the city and them to be able to meet and somebody was not allowed to go back in, so how do you prevent the problem? There, and then, yeah, we could just say, eh, big deal, we're gonna let it go, but 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 there there's, there's a reason. Why you don't let these things happen like this, you know?
Sounds like. So the 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 issue with the sediment, it's not as though the sediment problem was created by the state. That the project was eventually gonna be in the sediment was created by this limbo state that the project was in. In other words, if we had finished the project and had whatever vegetation, there would have been no sediment, the sediment was created. By the stop work order, does that make sense?
Well, I I could, I could, I could, I could buy that, you know, how how about the roots, how about the tree?
So to my knowledge, the the arborist, I mean, you find, you have a, you have a project, you have to investigate, you find roots that are damaged. You're making some of a somewhat of a leap by saying the project damaged the roots, we don't know when those roots were damaged. Or how, you know. We have to assume that it was our project, I get that, but, um, you know, that. It's an unfortunate side effect, but it's one that seems to be easily remedied by replanting and. It's a shame, we would never knowingly damage, uh, a tree, um, and now that we know about it. We're definitely gonna fix it, having damaged trees, you know, it's 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 a safety hazard for storms and, you know, we can't live like that. And see how Dunwoody's long history of storms knocking trees down, knocking houses down. Um, so, you know, we'll definitely address that now that we know about it for sure.
And then how, and the last thing is, how do we make sure that there's nothing going on the stream, in the stream? I mean, you don't have to answer, but that's, that's another.
You know, the the idea of the stream buffer to me just seems to be the general heading that this is coming under. We don't actually know that the final state of the project would actually cause a problem for the stream. We're only making an assumption because we saw some mud running off. That mud that would not have been there had we been been allowed to continue work.
I I think the way to, I mean, to remedy is give a citation to these people, the landscaper who calls this. And have them remedy, fix whatever, you know, I I the fact that it it's built, what are you gonna do to take out? Have them take out their wall and mess up their whole yard and their, I think that's so absurd, I think. Give them a citation, I do this, I mean, I do citations here all the time as a lawyer. Give them a citation and make it part of their their pro, you know, the remedy that they have to fix out of their own pocket. The issue that's been created in your backyard, I I mean, personally, I don't, respectfully, I I don't think you and your wife should. You know, be held accountable for this, um, that's, that's, I think the right, what the city should be doing, not bringing this. Whole thing before the board for over an hour to talk about someone, it could have been remedied with a citation. And a a fix that they have to pay for out of their own pocket.
I, I think one of the things that would help me here is there is a disconnect, I think, between, um, the vegetation, for example, the comment about the tree. If you take tree number three, it's alongside where the, it looks like the stream would be. And, and so part of the trees are again, the root systems. The root systems hold the ground down. The ground doesn't go into the stream. So when you have, and I think it was tree number three, one, one of those three was said that it's toast, it needs to come out for safety. Um, another one was a maybe and another one was just pull some dirt away. So I think those recommendations need to be taken seriously. And then what makes me feel better in a situation like this is to be like, okay, we see we've got a muddy area here, here's our landscape plan. And that's where this, this situation's a little different for me, because we've had other situations come before us where they've, um, the applicant has come forward and been like, well, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna over engineer the landscape. We're gonna make sure that this is solid. We're gonna be good partners in this. And so I think that's the missing part for me, which is why I was trying to lead the horse to water a little bit here. And say like, what are you guys gonna do? And so I think from the contractor's perspective, one hundred percent. Um, I know this was a big learning experience for you. Um, and in, and, and this is a headache for the homeowners and I, I'm, I, I am sorry for that for you all. And, and I, I, I'm in the same boat. I, I don't feel that you all should necessarily have to bear this burden. I think there is work that I would feel more comfortable that was in this remediations that were specifically outlined to make sure that this is not going to be a problem moving forward.
Easy had we had more than, you know, we had so many conversations.
Just to be honest with you, your, your contractor should have known this. And so this is part of having someone, I think, who's perhaps inexperienced in this area. And, and that's not through your fault and this is a growing area. And so something to learn, sometimes we have hard lessons. This is a hard lesson. Um, you know, what I need you to understand from our perspective is that things come before us. And it is, it is, we have to, when we, when we do pass these, we're offering special exception. And, um, and so the hard part for us is what happens when we have every naive, you know, or ignorant or willfully disobedient contractor come before us and then they just start building. And, and then all of a sudden, we're in a position where, well, what's the point of rules? What's the point of regulations? And so that, that's what puts us in a tough spot here is we're having to decide, you know, where that line is. For me, I'm worried that replacing your yard would be more damaging than letting it be. And that's why I really wish what I had seen here tonight and, and what I don't know if we can work into the recommendation is a solid landscape plan, is to make sure that there is vegetation that is going to make sure there is no mud going into that stream. That those trees are remediated appropriately and that there is replacement to make sure that the land is going to be solid. That's, that's me.
Um, I wanna make one additional point and then I'm going to suggest something. Um, I do wanna read the first paragraph from the preamble for the zoning board of appeals. Uh, why we, excuse me, are here. The zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. So it's important that we evaluate the facts of the case. Normally that is done before work is done in the, whatever situation it might be that has prompted the variance request. In this case, it's obviously after the fact. But it's important that we decide, is there a hardship that would have justified the work? Had it been done, had the variance been requested prior to the work being done. Um, but it is important that we identify a, uh, unique situation. If the applicant or the work has not exceeded the minimum relief necess, excuse me, the minimum necessary to afford relief and that we're not granting special privileges. So we are tasked with making sure that, as Erica said, not every homeowner in Dunwoody that wants to do something that is outside of the code, doesn't just go do it and come ask for forgiveness instead of permission. So I think that we've done a good job, even though it's taken over an hour. I think that we have run through all of the circumstances to the best of our abilities. And our choice here or our task is to evaluate if the, if a motion that is proposed can set this instance apart to the minimum relief necessary without opening the door to everybody following the same procedure. So thank you for all the information.
Quick question to the homeowner, and you don't have to get up. When did you guys move here? Twenty twenty-four, okay, last year, okay. Um, I, I, I'll tell you guys where, what I'm thinking, okay? And we could, somebody could make a motion or do something, but this is, this is, um, I, I hate it. You know, I guess everybody knows that already, but, um, I, 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 I feel bad for these two. I, I mean, I, I just, and it's not because, and, and, and I understand the city. But the thing is, I don't, the, the, the approval for all, of all, it just, for me, it just doesn't do it for me. I, I don't, I need, I need to have something like was said, some type of remedy or something else to do. But I, 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 I usually have somebody telling me, there's a recommendation, put the silk fence. We're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. There's none of this here. And I asked over and over, hey, listen, how is that going to affect it? If, if the wall is be moving, not, yeah, I got all these gibberish things, you know? I, I didn't get anything concrete. So what I, what, what I would feel better is in keeping these walls is with some concrete, um, plan or something that would tell me uh, whatever the city is concerned with is not gonna happen, or better yet, that I protect the stream that this whole, these, uh, this law is made to protect, okay? But I'm, I'm not, I don't wanna not give the war, I just wanna make sure I do my, do something, you know?
You could make a motion to approve the walls with the condition that a mutually agreeable mitigation plan approved by the city is followed, that will protect the stream and the landscape as best as possible. You can adjust or amend that.
And it's their responsibility, homeowner's responsibility.
And it's kind of, it's for sure. It would, approval would be in compliance with a mutually agreed and city-approved remediation plan.
And maybe, maybe the, maybe the, um,
I mean, it's pretty much what Erica was suggesting.
Can't get specific. No, no, all right.
And, and it, I, you know, Erica, this is what you were alluding to. So, I don't wanna take what you were, you know, you guys both. The language, so let's hash through it.
I think a silk fence on the disturbed land area, that's maybe to prevent any storm water from running into the, um,
But, but we don't, Erica, we don't need to get into the detail, like just specifics. We just have to say that the city would approve of a landscape remediation plan.
Yeah.
Just like we say that, uh, construction must be in substantial compliance with a site plan that was.
Yes, yeah. So, uh, and I don't know, I don't know if it's remediation. I, I wonder if the word is, uh, um, with a mechanism to protect the stream buffer and a, um, a mitigation plan to protect the stream buffer, um, until construction.
Probably ask the city if it's something that could do or what is.
Allegra said that they I'm, I'm sorry, I don't wanna speak. Allegra, can we ask you? Would, would the city be amenable to would, would you be able to approve a landscape plan? Is that something in your? I don't know, um, what's the word? Her view. Um, if.
We, we regularly approve landscape plans and there's been cases that have come before you all before where they've been conditioned to approval with a landscape plan, um, that's ultimately subject to, um, sign off from Richard, um, and our city arborist. That's a, that's a standard condition that we've used before with other stream buffer variances.
And you say that one more time.
That's the language I was looking for.
You got that, Erica?
So, so something along the lines of blah, 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 blah. Once a stream buffer protection and landscape plan is approved by the city.
Alright.
And, and I, I hope that whoever makes the motion, if you can work in the wording that in lieu of the potential potential destruction, even in landscape destruction that might occur.
In, in order to, in order to potentially mitigate negative repercussions from the removal of the walls.
Just that.
Okay. If I could make a quick, a quick note here, um, so obviously Steph's recommendation is what it is. If you all feel like you're gonna move forward with approval and with a condition that would subject them to a landscape plan, I would recommend putting a time limit on when that landscape plan needs to be submitted. And, and, um, I would say that it ideally is specific as possible for who at the city will approve it, like subject to subject to approval by the direct, community development director or something of that sort. That just makes it a little bit easier on us administratively to keep track of.
Approval.
We got the boss here, so.
Allegra, what was the role?
Who do you want it to go? Subject to approval by the community development director?
Yeah.
Um, do you think fourteen days? Would you feel comfortable with that being?
The city has automatic, uh, ten days on the first round or.
No, but submitted to you within fourteen days.
That's fine.
Um, I would say that we would wanna ask the applicant if that feels realistic for them. Because frequently landscape plans are put together by a landscape architect. And so sometimes it can take a bit of time to get that, to contract that's, that person's services. Then, then in, in that case though, considering the muddy area that they'd have, I would say that somehow we need to work in the, a, the mitigation, a stream, you know, the stream buffer protection. So like, is that good enough? So stabilization measures are in place.
They are, okay.
The silt fence is still in place, correct? So there is still a silt fence. So I don't think we're in sort of emergency territory. I would say fourteen days might not be enough to sort of turn.
Let's just say thirty.
Thirty, okay.
And then approval is probably
Thirty days for the granting of this variance.
That they have to submit a
Okay.
Landscape plan. And city will turn it around as quickly as they can. Said ten days usually. So obviously they don't have to wait thirty days. They do it in a week. It gets to the city quicker. Alright.
Okay, let me read you that, guys, that before we go. So blah, 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 blah. Um, contingent upon the approval of a stream buffer protection and landscape plan subject to approval by the community development to be said, uh, commu, community development director to be submitted within thirty days of approval of this, okay? Good? Yes, let me run.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, I move to approve, I Erica Harris, move to approve the request for one variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight to allow retaining walls to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer and one variance from chapter twenty-seven, section two hundred sixty-nine to allow retaining walls to encroach into the rear setback and to allow retaining wall height of five feet. Contingent upon the approval of a stream buffer protection and landscape plan subject to approval by this community development director, submitted within thirty days from approval of this, the granting of this variance. A second.
Alright, we have a first and a second. All those in favor of approval as stated? Alright, it's approved. Thank you all.
Lots of wine.
Very thorough. Everybody was.
Alright, team, other business? You can't just leave, you can't just leave. Public comment, no board comment, we're good. Alright, with that, we're adjourned.